Hi, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being televised through Watertown Cable Access, and the public also may join the meeting via Zoom. And the information is on the town's website, and the links are on the agenda. We also have an opportunity to phone in, and there's also an opportunity to ask any, have any public comment through email, which would be vpiccarelli@watertonmas.gov. All of that information is on the website. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Feltonner.
Present.
Counselor Gannon.
Present.
Counselor Canelis.
Present.
Counselor Palomba.
Present.
Counselor Picchirelli.
Present.
Counselor Woodland.
Present.
Counselor Bates.
Present.
Counselor Donato.
Present.
President Sedaris.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation
under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public forum. We have eight attendees. If there's anyone that wishes to ask questions, please use the Raise Your Hand button. I see Russ Arico. Russ, you should be unmuted. Okay, Russ, you should be off set.
Okay. Mr. President, distinguished counsel is Russ Arico from Fayette Street. You know, this week, the governor ended the ban on reusable bags. As far as I'm concerned, that's a big mistake. You know, really, Governor Houdini is not capable of making germs disappear. You know, we were given a projection on the lifespan of this deadly virus on certain surfaces. Now, for example, paper was three hours, copper four hours, cardboard 24 hours, wood two days, cloth two days, stainless steel two or three days, plastic three days, glass four days, paper money four days. And the outside of surgical masks, believe it or not, it can last for seven days. Now, this deadly virus can live on reusable bags for two or three days. And this is why, to me, it's a big mistake. And really, please stop trusting, giving blind trust for the governor. And I do not want to see reusable bags come back until at least that this virus, that we have an inoculation for it. I can't think of the word for the moment. When we can do that, and people can be vaccinated, and we can eliminate this as a major threat, then maybe we can go back to reusable bags. But until then, no reusable bags until we have a vaccine for this deadly virus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arico. Are there any other attendees that wish to be heard at this point? Seeing none, I close the public forum and move on to the next item, which is the Examination of Minutes. Can I get a motion on the minutes of June 9?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 9 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palomba. Counselor Picchirelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Bates. Yes. Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Do me a favor, just step this thing off.
Counselor Feltonner.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is President's Report, and I have three items this evening. The first is, I want to begin the referral process because I believe there may be more additional ones coming after we go through this one. So I'm looking to refer to the Committee on Public Safety, a discussion of the current operations and services being provided by the Watertown Police Department.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Canelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palomba.
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Bates. Yes. Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. The next item, let me clarify this because on May 12, we had referred to the Committee on Personnel, the evaluation forms I neglected at that time to say that we wanted to add some additional items. So tonight, I want to clear up that referral and ask for a referral to the Committee on Personnel and Town Organization, consideration of the evaluation forms and related salary adjustments for the town auditor and the town council clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Palomba.
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Bates. Yes. Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelis.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. The next item is a request that the town council appoint Melanson to conduct the fiscal year 2020 audit and vote to have a request for proposal issued for the audit and vote to have a request for proposed, for proposal issued for audit services beginning with the fiscal year 2021 audit. Section 5-4 of the town charter says that the town council should, shall provide for an audit to be completed by a certified public accountant or firm of such accountants, not later than December 31 following the close of each fiscal year. Now, typically, this would have been the year that this went out for a request for proposal. But given COVID-19 and given that we're already on July 14, I'm respectfully requesting that the council allow us to continue on with Melanson for the fiscal year 20 audit and to issue and then get a request for proposal issued sometime soon for audit services that will begin with the fiscal year 2021 audit. So can I first have a motion for, to appoint Melanson to conduct the fiscal year 2020 audit?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Feltonner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick thanks for clarification. I know a lot of things are on hold and up the air and difficult to complete, and we've been talking for a few years about request proposal for a different company for the audit. So I will be supporting the referral. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Picchirelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Bates.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palomba.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Can I now get a motion to issue a request for proposal for audit services beginning with the fiscal year 2021 audit?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Bates.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palomba.
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. And the public hearing and vote on a proposed ordinance amending the fiscal year 2020 compensation of the town manager. Just for some background, we had a legal notice, and it was posted that we were going to have this, we were going to have this meeting on this proposed amendment to the, to an ordinance for the salary adjustment on March 24, 2020. Unfortunately, again, I'm going to have to point to COVID. This did not take place that evening. I want to go over a couple of the comments that I made at that, in that evening. We entered into an agreement with the town manager, who's been working as an Atwill employee since December of 2011. The terms of the new agreement were similar to that agreement. The changes state the agreement will be effective until June 30, 2021. The council and the town manager will notify each other in writing that they wish to continue the contract by December 31, 2020, and to try to reach an agreement by March 31, 2021. There will be a salary increase of a little more than 2.25% effective July 1, 2019, to bring the town manager's salary to $210,000. His current town vehicle will be replaced with a similar fuel-efficient vehicle. There will be no further replacement without authorization of the town council. Vacation and buyback sick days provisions will be similar to that recently agreed upon with the Department of Public Works. There will be a reimbursement of up to $1,500 for personal term life insurance. Previously, it was $1,000. Town manager will receive $2,500 for long-term disability insurance. Previously, the limit was $2,000. However, the town manager may choose deferred compensation of up to $2,500 instead. Counselor Picchirelli moved to authorize me to sign the employment agreement, and it was adopted unanimously. So this is a continuation of what we should have done on March 24. I'm not going to, I'm not going to read now. Actually, I'm going to read the whole ordinance. I think it's appropriate. Whereas the town charter of the city known as the Town of Watertown, section 3.3 provides that the town manager shall receive such compensation as may from time to time be established for said office by ordinance. And whereas, the Division of Local Services performed a full financial management review and indicated the town manages its budget well and has tight financial controls in place. And whereas, Standard and Poor's Rating Services upgraded the town's bond rating to AAA, their highest rating in November 2013, and cited strong management conditions and plans to address its unfunded pension and other post-employment liabilities, OPEB, as two of the factors in the bond upgrade. And the town has maintained the AAA bond rating since. And whereas, the town has reached an agreement to continue the town's group health coverage under the Group Insurance Commission through June 30, 2021, which allows the town to continue providing quality group health insurance to its employees and retirees. And whereas, the town manager proposed a long-range financial plan for addressing unfunded other post-employment benefits liability, OPEB, and in financing the three elementary schools building project within the confines of Proposition 2 and 1/2. And the proposed plan was formalized but in the town council's fiscal year 2019 Budget Policy Guideline 2A. And whereas, the town is on the verge of having a fully funded retirement system on July 1, 2020. And whereas, the town manager proposed a long-range financial plan for addressing the unfunded other post-employment benefits liability, OPEB, and for financing the three elementary schools' building projects within the proposition, confines of Proposition 2 and 1/2. And the proposed plan was formalized in the town council's fiscal year 2019 Budget Policy Guideline 2A. And whereas, a performance evaluation of the town manager of fiscal year 2019 was conducted, and an internal review was undertaken of salaries of other town employees received during fiscal year 2019, and an external review of other towns managers, town managers' compensations was reviewed. The current salary of the town manager effective July 1, 2018 is $205,000. Now therefore, being ordained by the town council of the city known as the Town of Watertown, that Chapter 19 of the Watertown Ordinance is hereby amended as follows. By deleting Section 1 Compensation and inserting in its place the following. Section 1 Compensation. A, effective July 1, 2019, fiscal year 2020, the town manager's compensation shall be set at $210,000. Copy of this ordinance is available for inspection at the Administration Building on Main, 149 Main Street, Watertown, Mass, in the Town Council Office, Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Now, this is a public hearing, so I now open it up to the public for any questions or comments. I don't see any hands up. Counselor Picchirelli, do you have any emails?
No emails received.
Okay, I now close the public hearing and open it up for a motion from the council.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending the town manager's salary.
Is there a second?
Second.
I've said a lot this evening. I continue to say, I would have said the same thing in March. This town manager continues to do a significant amount of work and provides a lot of energy in everything that he does for this community, and has stepped up significantly during this COVID-19 crisis with almost weekly memos that go out and attending emergency management meetings in addition to his regular workload. So we truly appreciate your efforts on behalf of this community. Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Bates.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner.
Yes, please stay healthy.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palomba.
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Item 7, which is an informational presentation on the recently completed water and sewer rate study and the proposed fiscal year 2021 water and sewer rates. Margaret McCarthy, Weston and Sampson, and Matt Abraham's Abraham's Group. I'll turn it over to the manager, Mr. Tracy. Mr. Tracy?
Mr. President, members of the town council, the, as you know, back on June 24, the town auditor and assistant town manager of finance, Mr. Tracy, had forwarded a copy of a recently completed water and sewer rate study along with the fiscal year 21 water and sewer budget sheets. As a follow-up to that, there was correspondence provided by Mr. Jesse Myatt, Director of Administration Finance. Respectfully requesting informational presentation of the recently completed water and sewer study and the proposed 2021 water and sewer rates be placed on tonight's agenda. Subsequent to the informational presentation, as I've spoken to you, Mr. President, we respectfully requesting a referral to the, of the water and sewer rate study to the Committee on Budget and Fiscal Oversight for the review of fiscal year 2022 water and sewer rates and beyond. Mr. President.
Thank you.
My understanding, Mr. President, is that Margaret McCarthy, who's an attendee, raise her hand, and I think she will go through along with Mr. Matt Abrams. He's under listed as Matt, so the two hands that are listed.
Thank you. Welcome, Margaret. Welcome, Matt.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Now, I just need to figure out, because I'm used to a different platform, how to share my screen so that you can see the presentation as well. Is there a way for me to share my screen?
You can do that. I believe so.
Okay.
Margaret, you should be able to, in the right-hand corner of your screen, click on that, and it should share screen. You should be able to do that now.
I can click on the shared screen. I can now just not pick which screen I would like to share.
I'm not sure what to tell you about that.
I have selected Share Screen, and then I have not given any way to. What do you see when I hit Share Screen? Do you see all of you looking back or nothing?
Nothing.
Yeah.
Tom, do you have a copy of this presentation? You're on me.
Yes. Margaret, I believe all the councils have it. It is, the study was sent to them, and I think the PowerPoint presentation, which you're probably trying to share, was, I think, on the agenda.
Okay.
She was trying to share the screen. She...
So lack of being able to share my screen.
Yes.
Maybe the moderator shares his screen, and we can talk through it that way?
Moved up as a panelist, right? Yep.
Someone's got to share the screen.
Press Share Screen and choose which screen. She did, or said she did. Go ahead, do this. I'm not sure what to do. Oops.
Yep, host disabled, participant sharing. I'm getting the host disabled participant screen sharing.
Would it be possible for Marilyn to bring up the screen on her own as, as the council clerk?
Try, try sharing it again, Margaret.
I'm getting a host disabled.
Try, try it one more time. Sorry.
Okay. I think we're good to go now.
There we go. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. My, my name's Margaret McCarthy, and with me today, I'm actually not sure if you guys are getting my video or not.
Yeah.
Start the video as well. So you can see, share. You can see my screen now, and you can hopefully see me. And we're ready to move. Good evening, everybody, council. Thank you for having us and allowing us this time. We know that there's a lot on the agenda, so we'll try and make this brief. My name's Margaret McCarthy, project manager, team leader with Weston and Sampson. And Matt, who you will hear from in a few minutes, and I have been working closely with Jesse and Tom since October of 2019 on this rate study. We're here tonight to talk about the findings of this and our recommendations for the 2021 rate, which I know will be discussed and voted on later this evening in the agenda. So the objectives when we started in October of 2019 was to look at a five-year window with regards to the rates to ensure that we were generating enough in the water and sewer enterprise accounts to generate sufficient revenue to ensure your operational costs were being met, your indirect and debt service costs were being met in addition to continuing on the capital improvements that have been laid out in, by the DPW for the water and sewer programs. We're also looking to start to replenish retained earnings from 15% to 20%. What Matt is going to talk about is a shift that we actually made in March when COVID-19 started to occur. We've actually been reworking these numbers in light of the current COVID-19, which is certainly going to impact. And to the extent that it's going to impact is, is still to, still to be determined. AWWA had come out with some initial findings in terms of what they thought it was going to do to the water and sewer revenues, but that is very much still up in the air, and we can talk about that a little bit further if folks are interested. We were also tasked with reviewing the current rate structure in comparison to peer communities and provide recommendations or review the indirect cost allocations. Our observations, as we started to review the data, it looked like there might be a retained earnings shortfall in FY '20. The MWRA assessments are a significant portion of both the water and sewer funds, which are important to note. Water has been increasing by about 3.5% per year, and the sewer assessments have been increasing by about 4% per year. And that's important as you start to look at what the projections are over a five-year period. In addition, the enterprise funds were experiencing shortfalls as we started to dive into and really look at the data. We talked a little bit about potential impacts to revenue with regards to COVID-19. The other thing that has a big impact on revenue, which we are seeing very clearly in the last couple of months too, is that weather variations play a huge impact on usage. So what had started out as a very dry period in the midst of COVID-19, when water usage was going up because everybody was at home, but commercial usage was going down, now we're starting to see some very large fluctuations in the industry with regards to the dry weather we've been experiencing and the droughts. So it is very much, the entire water industry is watching this closely to see what's going to happen in terms of water usage. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, who is going to talk a little bit more details about the numbers.
Thank you, Margaret. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Yes, great.
Yes.
Thank you. Margaret mentioned that the funds are experiencing shortfalls. This slide and the next one show those shortfalls. This slide shows the baseline or the do-nothing scenario, which includes all of our projections for both revenues and expenditures except for the impact from rate changes. The expenditure projections include the MWRA assessment increases that were just described a moment ago, as well as the funding of the water capital plan, which has debt increasing from a budgeted amount of about $870,000 in FY '21 to over $1.5 million in FY '24 and '25. You can see large deficits in each of the fiscal years analyzed on the top row of the table on this slide. The second row on the table shows projected retained earnings. If no rate action, retained earnings are healthy enough to cover the deficit in FY '21, but not beyond that. The graph shows the percent of retained earnings as compared to the budget in each of the years, each of the years analyzed, which is the line that has the downward trend, and also the targeted amount of retainers of 20%. That's the straight line across. As Margaret just mentioned a moment ago, and the box shows as well, the targeted retained earnings balance was later updated to 15% due to the current volatile financial environment with the goal to monitor... with the goal to monitor the financial picture closely and to work towards the targeted 20% retained earnings as soon as practically possible. Next slide, please. The same slide for sewer. Similar story as well, except retainers are not as healthy for sewer as they are for water currently. With no rate action, retain, retainers for sewer are not able to cover the projected deficit for FY21. Like with water, sewer expenditure projections include the MWRA assessment increases that were just described, as well as the funding of the sewer capital plan, which has debt increasing from a budgeted amount of about $460,000 in FY21 to over $880,000 in FY25. Next slide, please. This slide, oh, you skipped one, Margaret, I believe. This slide contains our rate recommendation for water, which is option one in the memorandum that we provided to the town. We have presented a five-year plan for water rate changes that satisfy the town's goals of generating sufficient revenue to fund all projected expenditures and to start to replenish retained earnings to trend towards the targeted amount of 15% during the five-year period examined, which is evidenced by the graph's upward trajectory in the outer years. You can see the recommended rate increases for each of the five years in the top row of the table. And then the same slide for sewer. The graph shows a little bit of a different path to the targeted 15% retained earnings amount because the starting retained earnings balance is not as high for sewer as it is for water. This also contributes to why the rate increase in FY21 for sewer is higher than the one for water. This slide contains the impact on certain users' quarterly bills based on their meter size and usage. It was important to us to include the dollar impact on users' bills in addition to the rate increase percentages. As mentioned, or actually, I don't think we mentioned it yet, the, the average residential user we calculated to be just less than 2,000 cubic feet per quarter. So his or her bill, which would be the average residential user again, would be lower than the lowest bill shown here. And this slide is the same data as the prior slide, just presented in graphical format. This slide briefly highlights our review of the town's indirect cost methodology for water and sewer. We recommended that the town consider using prior year actuals instead of budgeted costs in the model, since budgeted costs may not be finalized until the end of the budget cycle, which means that the indirect cost number may not be known until then. Using prior year actuals would allow the indirect cost number to be known earlier in the budget cycle. We recommended prior potential changes to how the town determines allocations for some departments or expenses. We also provide the town with some other potential allocations to consider that, to consider that are not currently part of the methodology. We recommend that the town consider updating its indirect cost methodology in time for the FY22 budget cycle. This slide contains additional recommendations. We recommend the town review and update the water and sewer analyses annually, since there are many assumptions worked into them and those assumptions change. It is important to ensure the analyses reflect the most current and accurate information available at the time. We recommend the management analyst position be filled. During the study, it was noticeable that DPW is shorthanded in its ability to review and parse important financial and statistical data and that DPW would greatly benefit from the addition of a well-qualified individual and the new management analyst position that is part of the FY21 water budget. This individual would provide support and assistance with management of water, of water meter readings, metering data, quality control and billing disputes. Closely monitor usage trends. This is especially important during this time of financial volatility due to the pandemic to help ensure long-term rate stabilization for the enterprise funds. The management analysts can help with monitoring those trends. Reviewing the tier structure. We think the tier structure could use a thorough review to see if it is the best fit for Watertown. We did some quick analysis around the tiers and saw the potential for large swings in billings if the tiers were altered in a way that better suited the town. Upgrade meters and meter reading systems. The town has recently taken ownership of its large meters, but has not moved forward with the planned meter replacement program. The town can realize substantial additional revenue with more accurate meters and can benefit from modernizing meter reading capabilities to allow for better customer service and more frequent reads. Next slide. And with that, we'd like to open it up for discussion. Any questions, comments?
Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments from the council? Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess two questions around the meters. Now, you said that we haven't moved forward with our water replacement program. Can you speak to that? How that's different from readers that are being replaced now or being requested to be replaced now? And why we haven't do that? I guess that's more maybe for Jesse, my.
I'm happy to answer if Jesse is not on the call, because I have actually been involved with the meter replacement program.
Margaret, Margaret, why don't you answer and we'll have Steve move Jesse up as well. You go ahead.
Okay, okay. So prior to Jesse arriving and joining Watertown, I was involved with a project where DPW undertook an evaluation of the large meters. From that, recommendations were made with regards to potentially rightsizing and moving forward with meter replacements for the commercial meters. Why that program has moved forward, there's been a lot of other priorities with regards to DPW, but I will let Jesse speak that. But I do know that the, the program is something that is in the capital plan with regards to. So there's a rolling meter replacement that's just done as parts of good practice, but we had recommended really targeting the large meters. And then as the AMI system was upgraded for the commercial meters, eventually getting to the residential meter replacement program.
Jesse.
Jesse, you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Good evening. Yeah, the, the technical background that Margaret just gave is, is certainly more comprehensive than I could offer at this time. She's actually been involved in the, in the planning and moving forward as far as it's gone longer than I. But DPW does plan on getting it back on track. It came down to a delay and not having the right staff in the right place. But we are going to be revisiting that for FY21 and do hope to hit the ground running with that. And certainly we'll come back to the council with updates and a plan forward once that's available.
Thank you. Question, any other questions? Counselor Felton, you have another question?
Yeah, just quickly as a short follow-up and for the public to know, so if people are getting requests that their meter needs to be updated now, there'll still be, it sounds like a future residential rollout after the AMI gets going. Just trying to, you know.
Yes, the, the meter replacements that the public can request or by chance if DPW does leave a notice on a residential door, those meters currently are getting replaced and we're doing several hundred of those a billing cycle. The, the large meter replacement is, is a tad bit different and really centers around commercial users first and then the residential secondary. But the, the day-to-day billing cycle meter replacement counselor is still happening and is, is a bit different than the CIP meter replacement.
Come back to me, I'm looking for my space here, thank you. Hey, I'm talking about the tiers. Um, since this is going to budget and fiscal oversight, can you just give us a little idea of the, the issues around the, the tiering of that we currently have within the system and what is being proposed, if anything?
I can, I can take a shot at answering that.
Yeah.
So at this time, we're not proposing any changes to the tiers. The, all of the options that were presented in the memorandum were using the existing tier structure with no changes. But as part of the study, we did take a look at the potential for tiers being changed, maybe sometime in the future. And what we like to do when we focus on tier setting, we take a look at certain users and try and set the tiers a certain way so that certain users are in certain tiers and other users are in certain tiers as well. And we would take a look at doing that if we were to, to look more aggressively at the tiers.
So there would be, excuse me, if I may? So there would be no proposed changes to the tiers at this point in time?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me at this point. I just want to make sure I understand. The recommendations are for a 9.5 increase in the water bill and I believe it was a 6.5 increase in the sewer bill per year over the next four years. So we're talking about a potential increase from now to five, four years from now of, of close to 36 or 38% increase. Am I reading the graph correctly?
Yes, there, we did present rate increases in multiple years, FY21 through 25. I don't think that they were the same in each year, but there are increases proposed for each year at this time. What we did was we looked at all five years together and calculated what we considered the necessary rate increases to be to cover expenditures and also to target the retained earnings number that we talked about.
So it's, I'm sorry, may I continue?
Yes, counsel, continue.
I, I, I thank you for putting this up again. I just, I just want, it's, it's a little bit, I, I'm a little bit struck by how much we're talking about here in terms of increases for the homeowner. And maybe you could put up the slide that looked at the tiers. I mean, I believe that. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So we're talking about increases, are the five and a half, five eighths, that's most of us, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Right, so let me just move my face out of the way here so I can see the. Okay, that's fine. I, I just think it's, it's going to be a bit of a hard sell. The residents.
Let me just say that that's why we had this discussion with Mr. Tracy. That's why this is going to budget risk of all the stuff.
Right.
Because of the severe impacts of these rates.
Okay, thank you, Counselor, President.
Anyone else have questions? Anthony, Counselor Donato.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess just a question. I know in the memo we received, the proposal or the recommendation is that we go with option one tonight. And that option would be the, the increase of, I'm sorry, I'm going through, of the 7%. And I think one of the reasons it says that that's the proposed rate increases because it's trying to mitigate as much of the increases as possible. And so it, it would seem the reason that you chose option one, I guess, would be because the 7% is less than the increases proposed in options two and three. And where 94% of the water meters are that 5/8% that's why it's going to end up having the least impact, is that correct? Because also we're only voting, we can only vote on the water and sewer rates for one year. So while this is just projections for the next five years, we're only actually setting the rate for this upcoming fiscal year.
That's true, and we'll be doing that in August.
Okay.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my understanding that the MWRA assessment at 3% and 4% respectively makes up about half of each of those increases. I'm wondering, because you had mentioned that, I mean, your recommendations, we're going to need to have a yearly review that's comparable to the review that we took here to know if any of the assumptions that we're making panned out the way we expected them to. So it's my expectation, because these numbers will be the largest increases, that, you know, if we go this path that we've ever voted as a council, at least in my eight years, it'd be my expectation that we do a study like this every year for the next five years and that we are able to see five years out, kind of like the CIP, where we know what assumptions are working, what isn't. So we're in the best position possible. So I'm wondering, is that also the expectation of the DPW, of staff, that we continue this process each year to make sure that we are in the best position possible and that we're giving the best rates to the taxpayers?
Thank you, Mr. President, to Counselor Williams' comments. It is the hope of the administration that we would, we would do this review on an annual basis. Look at the cost, the budgeted costs and even the actual costs. And hopefully, in the out years, slow down the growth of what's being projected at this point. The further you go out, the further, you know, it's unlikely that would exactly happen. So yes, we would like to look at a five-year every single year.
And just to follow up, if we could have a follow-up at it every year as well. I, I think it matches up well with the CIP and making sure that we're addressing this on an annual basis so that we are staying on top of it. As well as the, some of the recommendations that were presented tonight aren't necessarily rate-related, but they're infrastructure-related. So maybe including some of these in the CIP as well. Just some thoughts, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Before I recognize Counselor Canales, anybody that hasn't asked a question yet? Counselor Canales.
Thank you. Going back to the slides, I can see the percentages and the total amount of the anticipated bill. Can you give us an idea of how much of a monetary increase the average resident would see?
Matt commuted.
Is this $29.91? Is this the actual increase that the average rate payer would, would incur?
That is the increase for both, for one water and sewer bill for someone that uses 2,500 cubic feet for one bill.
All right, so that's.
Yep, and that is right near the average. We think the average is a little bit lower than that. So the average would be a little bit less dollars. If you would like, I can try and get you an exact amount.
That's fine, and that's per quarter?
That's correct. This is a quarterly impact.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions at this point? Seeing none, I want to thank you for your presentation this evening. We appreciate your doing this for us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, Mr. President, again, thank you on Ms. McCarthy and Mr. Abrams. I was wondering if Town Council would consider a referral that I mentioned in the correspondence, and I spoke to you earlier, Mr. President, where the respective request of referral to the water and sewer rate, refer the water and sewer rate study to the Committee on Budget and Fiscal Oversight for their review of the fiscal year 2022 water and sewer rates and beyond. So that, what's been discussed tonight is, and it'll be earlier, later on, Mr. Tracy will speak to proposed water and sewer rates, as you mentioned, Mr. President, will be considered four weeks from tonight at the August 11th Town Council meeting. This is really more working with Ms. McCarthy and Mr. Abrams, Mr. Abrams on. This is really more working with Ms. McCarthy and Mr. Abrams on the fiscal year '22 and beyond, so.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the referral that has been requested? No move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes, just, I, I was trying to have my hand up, just a point of information, is this considered new business, or I'm just trying to keep clear of the referral, I don't have the agenda in front of me, I'm sorry. I'm not against the referral, it's just procedure.
This, this, this is a, this came up very late when we were having a discussion and...
You're muted.
You're muted.
This came up very late in my discussion with the manager and Mr. Tracy, and we, since it's only a referral, I assume that we can do this, Mr. Attorney Rich, without it being on the agenda.
Mr. President, it's my understanding of this matter came up within the 48-hour window for the, the meeting and was not anticipated when the, when the agenda was issued, so it could be brought up as essentially new business for referral. It's, it's not, it's not a substantive determination by the council, but it was not anticipated by the chair being yourself.
Thank you, I support the referral.
Okay, continue on, Marilyn.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelas?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pitorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Bates?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Thank you again for your reference. Jesse, Margaret, and Matt.
If I may?
Yes, Counselor Canelas?
If I may, thank you. I, it's, I knew, I saw it somewhere, but it's actually noted in the July 9th memo that this would be referral to the Budget and Fiscal Oversight Committee.
I didn't see that, thank you. The next item on the agenda is motions, orders, and resolutions, and 8A is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds in the amount of $28,500 from various fiscal year 2020 Police Department accounts to the fiscal year 2020 Police Vehicle Replacement Account. Mr. Manager.
I'll thank you, Mr. President, and all members of the council. Just as you recall back, the fiscal year 2021 budget message dated June 8th, on page 75, I had indicated that the additional funding requests for the vehicle replacement account had not been included in the fiscal year 2021 budget. It was my intention to address the funding request prior to the end of fiscal year 2020, which is this evening, utilizing available Police Department monies with the approval of the Honorable Town Council. Pursuant to that statement in the budget message, along with correspondents from Police Chief Michael P. Lawn, requesting the transfer within the, the Police Department dollar amounts, I'll speak to the transfer in a moment, but we did forward correspondence, which indicated the department has continued to identify unmarked cruisers which need replacement. These cruisers are older models, year vehicles, and more prone to repair and safety issues. The proposed transfer tonight would identified for replacement as a 2,003 Honda Accord with approximately 114,000 miles. So I respectfully ask your favorable consideration tonight, Mr. President, members of the council, the proposed transfer internally within the fiscal year 20 Police Department budget would be for various Police Department accounts to the fiscal year 20 Police Vehicle Replacement Account. I ask for your favorable consideration, the proposed transfer, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can I get a motion on the transfer?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of $28,500 for replacement police cruiser.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelas?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pitorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Bates?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next item is 8B, which is a resolution approving the acceptance and expenditure of a gift of funds in an amount not to exceed $4,200, which will be used to purchase two mountain bike bikes for the Watertown Police Department. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Town Council. We're very pleased tonight to inform that correspondents who we had sent along from Joseph P. Diaby III, the president of the Watertown Police Foundation, who had indicated the Watertown Police Foundation has offered to make a contribution in the amount not to exceed $4,200 for the purpose of acquiring two mountain bicycles for the Bicycle Patrol of the Watertown Police Department. Additionally, we forward correspondents from Police Chief Michael P. Lawn, who indicated that the bicycles will become part of the Police Department's fleet, replacing bicycles no longer in service. They will be ridden by Watertown Police Officers, who have been specifically trained in the operation and care, and the bicycles give, give the department a, a visible presence in areas of Watertown where marked cruisers are unable to access. And as the chief indicator, the, the department will be able to utilize them in many of the community policing programs and activities. So, Mr. President, members of the council, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 4453A, any expenditure, gift of funds, need the approval of both the town manager and the Town Council. I ask your favorable consideration, the proposed resolution approving the acceptance and expenditure of gift of funds not to exceed $4,200 from the Watertown Police Foundation to benefit the Watertown Police Department, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can I get a motion on the gift of funds?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the gift funds for $4,200 for two bicycles for the Police Department.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelas?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pitorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Bates?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Next item is 8C, which is a resolution authorizing a transfer of $132,500 from the fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve Account to the fiscal year 2020 Transfer to Capital Projects Parking Meters Account in order to move forward with the replacement of all 651 of the town's single space meters located throughout the towns, municipal parking lots, and commercial corridors. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. As the Council President just indicated, correspondence was forwarded from Mr. McGoon, the Community Development Planning Director and Assistant Town Manager, along with Laura Wiener, the Senior Transportation Planner, regarding the need for additional funding in order to move forward with the replacement of the 651 towns' single meters located throughout the town. At this point, Mr. President, members of the council, I'm going to have Mr. McGoon speak to the, the proposed transfer, and they provide the background to the issue. As you know, one of the items that Mr. McGoon will speak to is related to the recommendations of the Watertown Parking Management Plan, which was referred to a joint committee. Subsequent to Mr. McGoon's overview with the proposed transfer, I'll speak to the actual transfer that will be before you, Mr. President, members of council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. President, members of the council. As Town Manager indicated, as a unanimous endorsement of the parking, Watertown Parking Management Plan, the council asked the staff to then develop an implementation plan, which has been referred to committee, and it, and we've begun to, to work on, and, you know, we still have some further discussion of the policy recommendations that are contained in that plan. However, we, we would like to move forward with the purchase of new meter heads. You know, the existing meters are in, you know, need of replacement, and the technology that these meters contain allow us to install them. We will still have the ability to, to move them if we redesign any of the parking areas. We can program them to address whatever decisions made with regard to hours of operation or rates or any of those types of things. So, you know, this is a, a purchase that doesn't presuppose any of the implementation other than replacing some meter heads that need to, or in need of replacement regardless. Also, would note that we are taking advantage of Metropolitan Area Planning Commission procurement process that got some very good bids for equipment. We've, we've discussed that, and we've discussed, actually, with several vendors, equipment, and this proposed purchase will provide us with a considerable amount of flexibility in terms of the functionality of the meter heads. This would replace all 651 meters located in town, would also give us a little bit of excess for future maintenance needs. The cost is $457,000. As the Town Manager noted, there is 324,500 in previously appropriated fiscal years, so that leaves a balance of $132,500. So we therefore respectfully request that transfer in order to move forward with the purchase of meters. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. It's just Mr. McGoon summarized it again, the dollar amount, the, the additional monies needed this evening would be $132,500. The proposed transfer would be from the fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve to the fiscal year 20 Transfer to Capital Projects Parking Meters. Again, Mr. McGoon's available for any questions on the meters and moving on that, but I respectfully ask your favorable consideration, the proposed transfer, Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the transfer?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of $132,500 for the parking meters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Counselor, no, discussion, Counselor Canelas?
Thank you. Referencing the memo from Ms. Kleiner and Mr. McGoon on March the 6th, talking about the time to implement changes in pricing and time limits would be when the new meters are installed. So that's not going to happen. It's only going to be the installation of meters, and then any changes will take effect after we've discussed it as a follow-up in committee, is that correct?
Correct, Mr. President, through you. Yes, the, the initial installation would be consistent with current standards for hours of operation rates, all those things. And, and the beauty of the new technology is that those can be reprogrammed and adjusted in the future if we decide to implement any of those policy changes.
And if I may, as a follow-up, what type of payment will these meters accept?
Through you, Mr. President. So these will accept both coins, as they currently do. You can also pay by phone or with a card. So it's pretty much allows all the various forms of payment that the new technology allows now.
Okay, and are there any double-head meters in town, or are they all single?
You mean, double heads in terms of serving multiple spaces with one meter?
Yes, yes.
I don't think, I think we currently have all of those with a, a post that has two meter heads, but I'm not, I'm not 100% sure of that. But whatever we have today, we would replace with the new technology and mimic that.
Okay, so it wouldn't necessarily be limited to a single head. If there are posts that have two heads on them, they would be replaced in the same manner?
Yes, and, and this technology would allow us to serve two spaces with one meter head.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Palomba?
Thank you. Thank you for reassuring us that the, I was most concerned, not so much about any other implementation, but that if we ever had to move a, a meter, because we had decided to change something based on the plan, that we still could use the same head, that, right? I, I'm just wondering why we're doing this now? What's the advantage? Is the, does the Metropolitan Area Planning Council benefit that they gave go away? Or is it, what's the impetus to do this at this particular time, since it seems like we could do this after the implementation, after the plan got reviewed by the two committees? Is it, what is the driver, I should say?
Sure, again, through you, Mr. President. I, I would say two things. One, we have two fiscal years of capital budget money available, so we had some money available to do that. The prices aren't going down, and this procurement is a, a good price, it's a, a good opportunity, and we conferred with the vendor that we still could have those prices available if we went forward with procurement this summer. I'm sure that if we waited until next year or beyond that, the, the prices would increase. So we, we saw it as an opportunity.
Good, thank you.
Counselor Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to clarify that the meter replacement is one-to-one existing meters, or is it anticipated that existing locations that presently do not have meters will now receive meters? I've been seeing parking meter creep in Watertown over the last few years or so. Thank you.
Yeah, again, through you, Mr. President. So this proposal wouldn't add any meters. The Parking Management Plan did talk about adding meters in some locations, and again, that'll be a policy discussion we would need to have as we consider the implementation plan of the whole study. But purchase, this purchase would not add meters in any locations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Felton?
Thank you, and thank you for the additional explanation from Mr. McGoon. And just to clarify, I believe you said, I know that we have flexibility around, and the committees will discuss policy on cost and management of the meters, but in terms of there may be adding places, or if it looks like potentially moving areas where there wouldn't be meters, we would wait on that and not, I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm happy to see we could take advantage of this discount, just wondering about the timing of, I guess, installing meters that then may be moved later, if there's any downside to that. I'm sure you'll be evaluating that, but I thought you might want to speak to that. Thank you.
Sure, again, through you, Mr. President. You know, if we move forward with the purchase and we're, at the same time, having a conversation with the council, Joint Subcommittee in terms of the implementation plan, and there are some decisions made about, you know, locations or operations, we would certainly implement that at the time if we could. But I, again, I think the beauty of this is that any of those things that we install, you know, are, are not inconsistent with or incompatible with whatever we decide in terms of those recommendations. So even if we go ahead and install them where they are today with the operations today, we decide to move some meters, take some away, add some, change hours, change rates, all those things we can do and won't lose, won't lose anything with those meters that have been installed.
Any other questions? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Canelas?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pitorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Bates?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is 8D, which is a resolution authorizing a transfer of $500,000 from the fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve Account to the fiscal year 2020 Transfer to Capital Projects Stabilization Fund Account. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. As you recall, as stated in the fiscal year 2021 budget message, the Honorable Town Council has provided transfers from the Capital Projects Stabilization Fund beginning in fiscal year 2006, and, and will continue all the way through fiscal year 2024. That's 19 fiscal years at a half a million dollars each, each of those 19 fiscal years, which is $9.5 million to support capital projects. As I indicated in the budget message, we'll look for opportunities to make additional transfers to stabilization fund in order to support capital projects included in the five-year general fund capital improvement program. five-year general fund capital improvement program for fiscal years 2021 to 2025. That dollar amount of the capital improvement program is $524,150,000. So tonight, Mr. President, I respectfully ask members of the council your favorable consideration, the proposed transfer of a half a million dollars from the fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve to the fiscal year 20, transfer to Capital Projects Stabilization Fund. This would allow the monies, a half a million dollars, to be extended through fiscal year 2025. Again, sound financial management and providing support for the capital projects that are included in the fiscal year, five-year capital improvement program. Mr. President, members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can I get a motion on the transfer?
Mr. President, I make a motion that would prove the transfer of $500,000 for the Capital Projects Stabilization Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Cornelius?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. 8E is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds in the amount of $6,000 from the fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve account to the fiscal year 2020 Town, Town Manager, full-time salaries and the fiscal year 2020 Manager Other Employee Benefit Accounts. This is related to the public hearing we had earlier this evening that was delayed from March 24th to fund the employment agreement that we reached with the Town Manager. So can I get a motion on the transfer?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the transfer of funds of $6,000 for the manager's salary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Cornelius?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next item is also related to something that we did earlier this evening and it's a first reading on our proposed order establishing water and sewer rate, rates and charges for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Tracy, or Mr. Manager, do you have anything additional to add?
Mr. President, just very quick, very quickly, just providing background to the, as you recall, the Town Council had voted the fiscal year 2021 budget at the special Town Council meeting tonight. Mr. Tracy will speak briefly to the first reading, forward information tonight for a public hearing consideration four weeks from today.
Mr. President, members of the Town Council, as the manager just mentioned earlier today, I forwarded you a proposed water and sewer rate changes for fiscal year 21 as a draft of a legal notice that we'll put on, advertise it in the local newspaper and we'll be voting on, at the August meeting, August Town Council meeting. We'll be putting that in the newspaper for not this Friday, for the following Friday. And the, the rates that we, I sent to you is option one of the presentation that was discussed tonight, and it is a 7% increase in the water rates and the service charges and fire service charges for water. And then the sewer charges is nine and a half percent increases across the board. I didn't read all the individual tiers and the rates, but that was forwarded to you and we'll be putting that in the paper.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. This will be, again, advertising, taking it up on August 11th. The next item is committee reports and 9A is a committee on economic development and planning regarding the application and review process for adult marijuana institutions, Bud's Goods and Provisions, 330 to 350 Pleasant Street. Counselor Woodland is the chair. Counselor Woodland.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee convened on Tuesday, July 7, 2020 at 6:00 PM via Zoom in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the old meeting law, general law 38, section 20, related to 2020 COVID-19 emergency. President or myself, Chair Lisa Felton, Vice Chair Vincent Pichorelli, Secretary, Staff President with Steve Magoon, Assistant Town Manager, Director of Community Development and Planning, and Gideon Schreiber, Senior Planner, representing Bud's Goods and Provisions, were Alex Mason and Brian Grossman, also President, also President or Council President, Mark Sedaris and Counselor Anthony Donato. Purpose of the meeting was to discuss and make recommendations on the application review process for adult-use marijuana institutions, Bud's Goods and Provisions, 330, 350 Pleasant Street. I provided a recap of the process with this application. The community meeting was held February 6, 2020, and the single biggest concern of the approximately 30 attendees was the potential traffic impact. The proposed host community agreement, HCA, which is attached to these minutes, was reviewed by the Department of Community Development and Planning, as well as the Town Attorney, KP Law. It is straightforward agreement with a 3% impact fee as allowed by state law, plus a voluntary $10,000 annual charitable donation. Mr. Mason answered the committee's questions. Key points included Bud's would likely open in July 2021 if approved by the town and the CCC. Bud's has a community outreach plan and will contact community organizations. The facility will have 100% camera coverage excluding restrooms, and the security plan will be approved by the Watertown Police Department and the Cannabis Control Commission. For traffic, Bud's will develop a seven-day and 30-day opening plan to ensure the operation starts off smoothly and to give time to work out traffic and parking issues. Bud's will be responsible for hiring police details as needed to manage traffic. Counsel Pichorelli noted that no members of the public submitted emails to be read. Counsel Pichorelli made a motion, sent it to by Counsel Felton, to recommend Full Town Council authorize Town Manager to execute the host community agreement as presented for the adult-use marijuana applications for Bud's Goods and Provisions at 330, 350 Pleasant Street. We voted unanimously three to zero, meeting adjourned at 6:26 PM, following a unanimous roll call vote, report prepared by Counsel Pichorelli.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Cornelius?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Can I get a motion that the council authorized the Town Manager to execute the host community agreement as presented for the adult-use marijuana applications, Bud's Goods and Provisions at 330 to 350 Pleasant Street? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Counselor Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just wondering if perhaps the Town Attorney or someone could talk about the difference between the host community agreement proposed for this location relative to that, that's already the host community agreement that has been approved for the Elm Street location with natural selections.
Mr. President?
Yes, Attorney Rich.
Yes, thank you. The host community agreement is, I think, virtually the same. It's a format that the town has used. Obviously, it differs from, very early on, we did a medical marijuana facility when, when the, the, the town was first approached with one of these establishments. Now we're on to adult-use marijuana establishments. This agreement is virtually the same. It, it complies with state statute and provides the, the benefits to the town that are allowable under statute.
Yes, Counselor Gannon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just quick follow-up. Does either location, do both locations provide essentially the same monetary benefits to the town or is there, are there any differences?
I, I believe, if I, if I recall correctly, that they are, they are the same, the statute, and it's, it's, it's been updated, chapter 94G, as, as you know, has a, a cap on what municipalities can now ask for. So this, this, this agreement is consistent with the statutory cap on 3%.
And through you, Mr. President, thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
Counselor Palomba.
Thank you. Just given the community meeting that Counselor Woodland mentioned regarding traffic, I, I wonder if someone could, and in his minutes from the meeting, it said that they would develop a seven-day and a 30-day opening plan to ensure traffic starts off smoothly. What, does anybody know particularly what are they doing to alleviate the potential fear of, of whether it's a valid fear or not?
Counselor Woodland?
Thank you. I'm, I'm sure Alex or Brian could answer a little bit better than I could, but the general gist, in the same way that other stores have opened, is that the expectation is that in your first week or first couple of weeks, you're going to have higher traffic flow. So what they would do is hire the proper staff to make sure that the entrance and exits are operating in a smooth fashion, that folks are able to be safe in entering and exiting the building, and they would have control over that intersection. So the entrance is very close to the light that's on the corner of Rosedale and Pleasant. So it'd be their job to coordinate traffic between them for a higher anticipated opening, and then they do the 7 and 30 because I think that's what the industry has seen as the cutoff for when you might experience that first initial jump and then a subsequent bump. And they would view it every week with the police department anyway.
Anyone else? Counselor Donato?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just think it's important to note that one of the comments that came from the Bud's Goods team was they're not going to open for a year and the expectation is between now and that time that a significant amount of recreational shops are going to open in the area. So the hope is that the traffic that was seen when some of the first locations opened across the Commonwealth, the expectation is that the traffic won't nearly be, be nearly as high due to the fact that there'll be a lot more locations open within this area. Thank you.
Can I get a roll, Counselor Cornelius?
Thank you. Within the minutes of this particular committee report, there's reference about the community meeting. I apologize, it's been so long since February. Do we have any documentation from the community meeting or a sign-in sheet? Is there any backup?
Counselor Woodland.
So before we did the meeting the other day, I watched it. So you can actually watch it live. It's on the Community Access Channel, and they do a couple, their cameras are set up in such a way that you could count the attendance. It pretty much fills up the room at the police station, the community room, with some folks standing. But that includes no one sitting in the first two rows because no one ever likes to do that. So it's about 30 attendees and we never signed in sheet, but if you watch the video, you'll get a great idea of the, the attendance.
So the petitioner did not, did not coordinate the meeting and didn't take minutes or anything for the record?
Counselor Woodland.
As far as I know, there's no official written minutes. Again, the video is available online.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Cornelius?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. 9B is Committee on Economic Development and Planning report, regarding the reappointment of members of the zoning board of appeals and the planning board. Counselor Woodland.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee convened on Monday, June 22, 2020 at 6:00 PM in the park behind the police station. President or myself, Chair Lisa Felton, Vice Chair, and Vincent Pichorelli, Secretary. The purpose of the meeting was to conduct interviews with the ZBA and the planning board. Melissa Sentucci Rossi is seeking reappointment to the ZBA, where she is currently the chair and has been on the board for about 18 years. She's a principal planner for the town of Braintree. She feels the ZBA is very effective with a good mix of members that have a broad range of experience. She thinks the zoning ordinance should be revisited to improve the quality, accessibility, and purpose of open green space, as well as a way to hold developers more responsible to the community. We'll do the action items later. Paeset Whitney III is seeking reappointment to the planning board, which he has served on since 2017. He's a registered professional engineer with more than 25 years' experience in civil and coastal engineering and project management. On his first term on the board, he learned a lot about the process. He believes the talent to take a hard line to prevent developers from bringing last-minute changes to drawings the night of the meetings, as this does not give the board adequate time to review them ahead of time. Michael Brangwin is seeking reappointment to the ZBA as an alternate member, which he has served on since 2018. He's a lawyer at the firm Fletcher Tilton PC, specializing in complex civil litigation. As an alternate member, he actually voted in almost every meeting. While his experience is law in interpreting the zoning ordinance, he has learned a lot from his fellow architects and engineers on the board. Again, the action items will be read in a second. The meeting adjourned at 6:40 PM. The report is directly buried by Counsel Vincent Pichorelli.
Can I get a motion to accept the report? No move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the report? Roll call, please.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Cornelius?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. First action item, can I get a motion?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
I'd like to make a motion that the Town Council confirm Melissa Sentucci Rossi for reappointment to the zoning board of appeals as a full member for a term to expire February 15, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Cornelius?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next action item, Counselor Woodland.
I'd like to make a motion that Town Council confirm Paeset Whitney III for reappointment to the planning board for a term to expire on February 15, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Marilyn, I hope you have a lot of ink in your pen.
I do.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Cornelius?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next action item.
I'd like to make a motion that Town Council confirm Michael Brangwin for reappointment to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate member for a term to expire on February 15, 2022.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Cornelius?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is 9C, which is the Committee on Parks and Recreation Report regarding confirmations to the Community Preservation Committee. Again, Counselor Woodland.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Parks and Recreation met on Monday, June 15, 6:00 PM in the park behind fifteen, six P M. in the park behind the police station to interview Dennis Duff and Mark Kiewitz for reappointment to the Community Preservation Committee, or C P C. President Warren, myself, Committee Chair, and Councilor Palomba, Committee Secretary, the interview of Mr. Dennis Duff. Mr. Duff responded to questions regarding the strengths and challenges of the C P C and where he sees the C P C going in the year coming. He pointed to the diverse makeup of the C P C and the dedication of its members to put the time and energy into creating a structural, a structure and process that would facilitate the C P C's work. He approved of the C P C's decision to dedicate five percent of the C P A funds to hiring a part-time staff person, who's been very helpful in managing the extraordinary amount of information the C P C needed to process. He was particularly pleased with the C P C's first public meeting, both in terms of the attendance and in terms of content. Mr. Duff did have some reservations about the consultant they hired to assist in the development of the C P C plan. It is his hope that the plan and application process will be ready by mid-fall of this year. We can get the action items in a second. I then asked Mr., I'm going to, I apologize for saying this wrong, Kaskowitz, the same question. He noted the C P C initially had some rough patches, which were expected, given the diversity of opinion and strong-willed nature of the members. However, the members were able to work productively to reach agreement on a scope of work, job description, and interview questions needed to hire a consultant. He seconded Mr. Duff's opinion that the first public meeting was terrific and provided a public and detailed understanding of the Humanity Preservation Act. In terms of going forward, he felt the C P C had accomplished a major task by working with the consultant to create a value statement, guiding principles, and goals, as well as a webinar. The task ahead was to encourage residents to view the webinar and provide feedback on the values, principles, and goals. This is necessary prior to the C P C presenting the final plan to the public in late September. He hoped the applications to the C P C would receive, would include a major project that would excite the public. The motion will be in a second, and I made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Councilor Palomba seconded the motion, adopted by a vote two to zero at six forty P M.
Thank you. Councilor Gannon, I saw you, I missed your hand before. Did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And that related to the prior item with regard to the appointments of the Planning Board and the Zoning Board. I just had a question for the Town Manager. Having just stepped down from the serving on the Zoning Board myself six months ago, I'm curious about the staffing levels of the, whether the Zoning Board and the Planning Board have full complements of staff, both alternates and full members. It's just, it's difficult when there's not, there's a short number of staffing in terms of reaching quorums and that kind of thing. So my question was directed through you, Mr. President, to the Town Manager.
Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, to Councilor Gannon's query, we do have a full complement on the Planning Board. And where do we have, we have two alternates on the Zoning Board of Appeals. We do have, as Councilor Gannon mentioned, his previous service to the town was a full member in that position and still vacant, and we're looking to fill that in the near future.
You, Mr. President. Thank you, the Town Manager.
Thank you. Back to what we were just talking about. Can I get a motion on the report from the Committee on Parks and Recreation?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion on the report? Roll call, please.
Councilor Palomba?
Yes.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Bays?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Councilor Feltnar?
Yes.
Councilor Gannon?
Yes.
Councilor Canelas?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. First action item?
I'd like to make a motion. The Town Council reappoint Dennis Duff to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire on February first, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Bays?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Councilor Feltnar?
Yes.
Councilor Gannon?
Yes.
Councilor Canelas?
Yes.
Councilor Palomba?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. The Town Council reappoint Mark?
Praskovich.
Praskovich, never going to get it, to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire on February first, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Bays?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Councilor Feltnar?
Yes.
Councilor Gannon?
Yes.
Councilor Canelas?
Yes.
Councilor Palomba?
Yes.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you, Councilor Woodland.
Thank you, Mr. President. I neglected to thank Councilor Palomba and Councilor Picciarelli for preparing the reports in such a timely manner. Also, all the committee members, for two, at least two of these meetings, we held them in parks. So we did, we did them in the park behind the police station. So everyone showed up, and we adhered to social distancing. We stood like ten feet apart. We all had masks on, but it was pretty apt for the first meeting of the Parks and Rec Committee to meet in a park. So it's very nice for the committee to accommodate that and to be flexible, given the coronavirus situation. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is new business, and ten A is a referral to the Committee on Economic Development and Planning, the redrafting of the Housing Production Plan in partnership with the Watertown Housing Partnership, and subsequent consideration of implementation and funding for said plan. All current housing-related referrals will be consolidated into this referral. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Councilor Woodland?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is my referral. So I guess the long story short is that the Housing Partnership is currently working on the redrafting of the Housing Production Plan, which I think is from fourteen or fifteen. And that's going to need to come over to the council once it's complete. So there's presently no referral to that effect. So housing issues are referred to Economic Development and Planning per the council rules, where the housing is obviously explicitly stated under E D P. So it just made logical sense for me when considering the implementation phase of the Housing Production Plan, to have all housing issues currently be considered under one roof, so we can coordinate under one committee and move that forward.
Any further discussion? Councilor Bays?
So, but these are, these is affordable housing, and affordable housing has always come to the human services, and we've done a lot of work on, on these things already. I mean, we're in the midst of these things. We're actually not even in the midst. We're towards the end of a lot of the decisions and a lot of the, the work and research and talking to people. And I mean, it's always been with us, and I don't understand changing, not even midstream, at the end of the stream, changing committees.
Any other comments? Councilor Palomba?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I do want to second Councilor Bays' comment. Even the Housing Production Plan, which, as you know, the partnership is tasked with creating and preserving affordable housing, that issue of affordable housing has sat, 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 sat with the Committee on Human Services for the last two and a half years. We look forward, actually, to seeing what the final plan was. Many of us have sat in on the housing production, I'm sorry, at the partnership meetings. We've built a working relationship with the partnership, who has attended many of the meetings that the council, that the Committee on Human Services held in the last two and a half years, I believe close to eighteen meetings. So I would hope that we would defeat this resolution and this referral and send both the production plan, if and when they're ready to present it to the Town Council, to the Committee on Human Services, along with allowing us to continue our work on issues of affordable housing.
Are there any other comments? Councilor Donato?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess just for clarification, is this going to be two votes or is it one vote? Just because it seems like they might be separate items, just for clarification.
One vote. One, this is one, because it's related to all current housing-related areas as well.
Okay. I think I would, just as a follow-up, I, I, I would just like to say, I understand where Counselor Woodland is coming from, and that housing is specifically enumerated under the Committee on Economic Development and Planning. I think with a topic such as affordable housing, I think it's, it's difficult to pigeonhole that into one specific area. And I do want to acknowledge and recognize all the work that the Committee on Human Services has done with regard to this topic the last two and a half years. So I will not be supporting this referral tonight.
Are there any other comments? Councilor Feltnar?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'm just surprised to see this referral, especially at this point. A lot of progress has been made and really active meetings with staff, with the community, well-attended. I know I've attended many of the meetings and attended a housing partnership meetings before the referral was even taken up. So I feel like they've been really diligent in addressing affordable housing. And to many statements already made, the timing doesn't really make sense to me. I know that I mentioned the description of economic development and planning and housing before, I don't know, a while ago, and asking maybe in the future, we could have more clarification practically how this works. But I won't be supporting this referral either. Thank you.
Are there any other comments before Councilor Picciarelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I would just first say that the Housing Production Plan has always been the responsibility of the Economic Development Planning Committee. And at some point, I, I don't see losing any of the work that the Human Services Committee has done examining affordable housing. But at some point, we need to take that and roll it into the plan and update and republish the plan. I'll point out that the Watertown Housing Partnership does not have the responsibility for producing the Housing Production Plan. They have responsibility for input into it, but they don't have a responsibility for, for adopting and approving it. That rests with the Town Council. And we talked about this in the past with the Housing Partnership and the Human Services Committee, that we need to get all that sort of rolled together into a plan, and then needs to come back to the council. We need to decide to actually publish a plan and have us adopt it to move forward. So I don't see these two things being mutually exclusive. In fact, I see this, this referral being sort of the natural result and conclusion of all the work that's been done to date, so we can actually publish a plan and then have the council vote on it. I don't see any of the work that the Human Services Committee's done over the last two and a half years. I mean, that helped inform the decision, as well as sort of the research that the Housing Partnership has done. But I think at some point, all that needs to be rolled together into one plan, and it has to come back to the, ultimately to the Committee on Economic Development and Planning. So I, I, I'm going to support this because it actually needs to have a referral. But I would like to see the human, all of the results of this Human Service Committee meetings over the last two and a half years sort of be sort of wrapped up and put, come to a conclusion along with the research that the Housing Partnership did. So, so to me, it makes sense. It's a long process, and I think a lot of work's been done. A lot of great ideas have come forward. But I think we, we need to, you know, for us to actually move forward, it needs to have a plan published. And I think this is, this is the last step to publishing the plan for us to vote on.
Councilor Woodland?
Just to piggyback a little on what Council Picciarelli said, housing has always gone to E D P, except for this last series here. When we went from ten to twelve and a half percent, from twelve and a half to fifteen percent, all those referrals are E D P. When we did all the zoning, related to ARMLED, related to affordable, that was all E D P. That's where the history of this issue is, because that's where the language of the, the Committee explicitly states. So again, it's going to have to come back here, because that's where the Housing Production Plan sits. Yeah, so I think that's, I'll be supporting this.
Anyone else have comments? Councilor Donato?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I guess I'm just a little confused. This will only be my second term on the council and not maybe having the institutional knowledge with regard specifically to the Housing Production Plan. And that was why I'd asked the question earlier as to whether or not these were two items or not. Because if historically, the Housing Production Plan would go to the Committee on Economic Development, I could understand voting for that referral. But I would also, you know, want to make sure that the Committee on Human Services would be able to complete the work that it has undertaken.
Well, my suggestion at this point is that I would respectfully request we hold off on this referral, not to vote it down, not to say which committee should be done. But what I'm going to respectfully request is that the Human Services Committee, do their due diligence as possible to come up with a report and a final recommendation to the council, so that we can move forward with some items like this. And I'm also going to work with Mr. McGoon and Mr., and Attorney Rich, on clarifying where housing referrals will go in the future. I think that's important. We keep hearing about it, but I do think that we do need to, and we will clarify that. But I do respectfully request that, in my opinion, we should request that the Human Services Committee finish what they're doing, but we can still hold off and do this referral once we see that report. That would be my suggestion. We don't have to do that. The council can go in any direction they would like. But I don't, I don't feel that at this point, we have some competing interests here, and a lot of work has been done. And I respectfully appreciate all the work that the Human Service Committee has done to date. And I would like to, you know, see what their final outcomes would be. And then we could continue talking about other referrals. So are there any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. Would it make sense, hearing that, to change the last sentence of this referral to say, the final report on the Human Service Committee, affordable housing referral will be incorporated into this plan, something like that, or subject to that? Or would your attention be to sort of just table this to a future, until after the Human Service Committee produces its report?
What I, what I'm trying to do is find a media, a common ground here, where we have a lot of work that's ongoing and not finished. And we have, you know, we do have, we have met Safe Harbor, and we do have to come up with a new housing production plan. I do think that what I'm trying to do is prod the committee, the Human Service Committee, to come up with some type of a final recommendation before we continue referring other things to economic development. But again, this is the will of the council. I'm just making my suggestions. Councilor Canelas?
Thank you. Would we like to actually include a timeframe? How much longer does the committee need before they can actually submit a report?
Councilor Palomba, can you answer, have any insight into that?
You know, we have three different proposals that we have presented in the past to, for discussion, given the difficulty in finding time to meet, given the COVID situation, and that there's only one meeting per night, giving the competing meetings. I can't give a timeline, but I could suggest if, if that we try to wrap up our, our work by the beginning of two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one.
And?
Are there any other comments? Right now, we have a motion and a second. Does everybody want to proceed?
I
Councilor Palomba?
I, I, fine. I think the committee would feel, Committee on Human Services would feel fine with your recommendation, Council President Sedaris.
Can I get other comments here? It's Councilor Donato, then Councilor Woodland?
Thank you, Mr. President. It seems to me that it would make sense to wait to get a final report from the Committee on Human Services until we decide where we're going to go with affordable housing issues in the future. So I would support your recommendation.
Councilor Woodland?
Not to be that guy, but I'm not going to withdraw my motion to move forward. I'll accept Councilor Picciarelli's amendment that we add some language to it that says, you know, the Human Services Committee will issue a report by the end of the calendar year, and that will be a basis for the considerations by the committee.
Councilor Feltnar?
Thank you, Mr. President. I really appreciate your recommendation. I, there's so many unknowns right now. I know that we're all wanting to move forward, get things done. So many things are still on the backboard or burner. But to me, it's kind of a, it's really it's really, I can't put a timeframe on it, although, you know, I don't think they're purposely stalling, in other words, and I support. I think everyone anticipates we're going to wrap their recommendations in and I'm going to, you know, I'm really looking forward to working on the Housing Production Plan, but there are many, many pressing issues. And so I prefer to wait for their report and not really vote on a motion that well-intentioned perhaps, but with some valid points, but not really going to get us where we need to be anyway.
Counselor Cornelis.
I would agree with Counselor Petrelli if we were with his amendment that would also include the timeline that Counselor Palomba indicated.
Anyone else? Counselor Palomba.
I just want to be clear, Counselor President, President Sedaris. I don't, the committee has work to do. We will try to do it by the beginning of into fiscal, I mean, in 2021. But given the amount of items that are on our agenda as a council and given the difficulty in holding meetings, I don't want to be held to a particular date. If you want to say that we will do it within the first quarter of 2021, I could live with that, but I'm not interested in a hard and fast date.
Counselor Petrelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess I would ask both Counselor Woodland and the members of the Human Service Committee, if we change that, strike that last sentence and change it. And again, taking Counselor Palomba's suggestion to not put a specific timeline and just change that last sentence where it says all current housing-related referrals will be consolidated into this referral, change it to say said plan, comma, incorporating the final report of the Human Service Committee on Affordable Housing. Would that address everybody's concern, both Counselor Woodland and Counselor Palomba, Counselor Baze?
Counselor Palomba.
I do want to, I'm a little unclear about what you're simply saying here. I do think that the Housing Partnership might have something to say about how it wants to present the plan. I do want to reiterate, the reason that I have pushed hard for this is because unlike general housing production, affordable housing is for me a human need and that's why it fits under Human Services. And affordable housing is different than general housing production. But I would love to see the Housing Production Plan come to the Human Services Committee because I think we've been working with them diligently over the last year and a half or more. We have regular, I try to attend as many of those meetings as possible. So I, if this is the will of the body, I don't, I would like to hear again how that last sentence would be changed.
Counselor Petrelli and then Counselor Felton.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I just, to Counselor Palomba's question, the first, second line of the referral does say in conjunction with the Housing, Water Town Housing Partnership. So they are actually part of the process. But I would, I propose the amending the motion to strike that last sentence and replace it with a comma after the word "plan" and then saying incorporating the final report of the Human Service Committee on Affordable Housing. So it would just sort of bring all the pieces of it together in my mind.
Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I'm unmuted. Yes. Again, things are on the right track in Massachusetts and New England. Thank you to everyone who's doing their part on COVID. We all know we don't know what's going to happen in the future, the fall, the schools, the things, everything that's on the plate with the town manager, the emergency management, the President Sedaris. And the president's already committed that he's also going to be working with the town attorney and the town manager thinking more deeply about best approaches around housing. So it is a very important topic. So I don't, we know we're not going to be able to have this referral for a while. We're not going to be able to act on it anyway. So there's really no need to, in my mind, push on this now. It is going to come back and likely involve economic development and planning, but but there could be things we haven't thought about and things that could change during COVID and the President Sedaris is going to be, you know, reviewing that with the town attorney, the town manager and potentially council in the future as well as things hopefully, you know, positively progress in the fall. But I don't think this is the best use of our time or that it's really a necessary motion or a new business that we take up right now. And so I'm not going to be supporting it.
Counselor Cornelis.
Thank you. I think the word that Counselor Petrelli most recently used was incorporating the material. I don't know how quickly economic development and planning would actually be working on this based on the current situation. But if, if Human Services isn't going to have a document available until the first quarter of 2021, would the document just be incorporated as an appendix to the document or would it actually be discussed as part of the process? So this being said, I really can't support it moving forward without knowing some finite details. Thank you.
The question I would then pose is when we use the word incorporate, the council would still have to decide if the report is what they, the council is still going to have to vote on a report or an action or something from the Human Services Committee. We don't know what's going to be incorporated. So I think that it becomes a little bit cloudy when we say incorporate. What are we, what are we really incorporating? We don't know what we're incorporating. You know, I would strongly suggest that, you know, we take a vote and we see where it lands and I made a suggestion and it doesn't sound like that's the way we want to go. So if we don't have any more comments, let's just take a vote and move forward. Counselor Woodland.
Just one more comment. We're obviously living in a very strange time with coronavirus. We're doing obviously this meeting via Zoom. There comes a point where we have to move issues forward. It's our duty as counselors. We owe a solemn duty to the citizens of Water Town to be actively moving issues forward in their best interest and providing the best service we can to our taxpayers. If this comes to EDP, it'd be my expectation, if the motion as is, to have a final report on at least the current issues that are being looked at for housing by the end of the calendar year. We shouldn't be in the mindset of, hey, let's wait because things are strange. We need to be moving on all issues in the same manner because we owe that to our residents. And I think, you know, pushing things out is, we can't be having issues be lingering for a couple of years through multiple terms. That's just, I don't, I don't think that's, that's fair to the folks that we're representing. So I mean, I think like you said, fine, just vote as it is and it gets what's done.
There are no other comments. Can I get a roll call, please, on the referral?
Counselor Baze.
No.
Counselor Donato.
No.
Counselor Felton.
No.
Counselor Gannon.
No.
Counselor Cornelis.
No.
Counselor Palomba.
No.
Counselor Petrelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
No. Thank you. We will get clarification as we move forward. I'll be working with the town attorney and rest of Magoon to clarify this so that we know exactly as we move forward, the roles of each of these committees. The next item on the new business is a referral to the Committee on Economic Development and Planning. The consideration and recommendation of Transportation Network Company Funds, TNC. Is, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Woodland.
Not to be outrageously snarky, but this is an issue that is traditionally referred to the Economic Development and Planning Committee. It has been every time the issue of Transportation Network funds have been brought up. We've made multiple recommendations for this to go from the committee to the council. But seeing how the objective definition of words in our committee definitions maybe are in question, I'll be open to recommendations for other committees to refer this to if folks want to make suggestions.
Any other comments on this referral? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Donato.
Counselor Felton, did you have a question?
Well, yeah, I guess. I just, I can understand a standard procedure. I guess this relates to, I was going to, I wasn't sure where to bring this up towards the end of the meeting if it's a request for information, but I, I'm, two things, I'm wondering if we could have an update. As I said, we're all eager to move forward. Things have been a back burner from the president and your conversations with staff and managing the day-to-day and the very many pressing issues we have going on. How we expect to move forward, you know, reopening, are we going to keep to one meeting a night? So kind of the how. And then the second part is, you know, we were talking about this even before COVID a little bit, that great guns blazing, lots, you know, lots going on Water Town. We're very excited, getting a lot done. But is there some method or mechanism where we could improve or be more efficient in just actually scheduling the meetings versus having emails go back and forth? And, you know, is that something that comes out of the council clerk's office? There's a lot of logistics, you know, just getting the date, the people, making sure staff are informed, what rooms are available. So that said, of course, I'm not against this referral. I just, I see a lot of energy here, which is great, and we all want to get things done. I just, I'm not sure if people are really aware of the pressures we have on the schools and public safety, public health. It seems like a little bit of disconnect to me. I know we can walk and chew gum at the same time, but we have a part-time council and still, you know, some difficulty with this remote meetings and really having full transparency with the public and, you know, personally, like the charter review is supposed to be happening. We're not doing that. And then we have a lot of these referrals. So I guess I'm just asking for some perspective and would like some guidance from President Sedaris. And I know it's also summertime and a lot of people are trying to take vacations in August and other people are sick. So anyway, thank you for indulging my thoughts.
First of all, we will have, we're working on our, I'm going to call it, re-meeting, reopening meeting plan at this point. And I'm not ready to announce anything because it's still in process. People have been very clever in finding ways to meet in parks. And there's another meeting tomorrow night in the park. So we're opening some of these meetings up. These next couple of referrals have come from, directly from the Economic Development and Planning Office. And they need, you know, some guidance to move things forward. So we can't, you know, while I don't think these are as high priority as, let's say, the charter and things like that. I do think that we do have to try to find a way to continue to allow these meetings to happen. And again, we, there will be a plan going forward. We're actually right now allowed to have 25 people in a room. So we will have something going forward. I suggest that it was a meeting in Salt and Stoll Park last night. There's a meeting tomorrow night at Arsenal Park. So, you know, some of these other meetings, they seem to be working well. So we're developing the plans and I know that's not what everybody wants to hear, but at some point, we're going to get back to some, we're going to call, like the governor calls it, a new normal, which is not going to be the old normal. So we're working on that as we speak. Counselor Felton.
Thank you very much. And just to follow up, and that helps because when we have these referrals, we don't really have any information where it came from and there wasn't a discussion. So I wasn't sure if it was coming from staff or not. But for example, on the terms of the mechanism, you know, there are things like doodle or, and I know we, there are more efficient ways to reach people and schedule meetings and narrowing down dates. And I just bring it up again as perhaps it's an opportunity for us to consider that when we're looking at, or you're looking at our reopening, council reopening.
Possibly using something like a doodle phone to do it rather than 10 emails back and forth.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on this referral. Counselor Woodland.
Yeah, just for the record, I was just being sarcastic. I was just chiding everyone for wondering whether or not the term housing included affordable housing. So that was my comment there. People are more than welcome to send referrals to EDP because we're going to address them in a very timely fashion. This one was from staff. It's timely. It'll take 20 minutes of a meeting to make a recommendation. It's not going to be too onerous. So my previous comments were just, just being wise as opposed to substantive on that definition.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Felton.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Cornelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palomba.
Yes.
Counselor Petrelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Baze.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Sorry. A referral to the Committee on Economic Development and Planning, a review of the Wayfinding Grant, which again is coming from the Economic Development and Planning Office.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Felton.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Cornelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palomba.
Yes.
Counselor Petrelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Baze.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Communications from the town manager, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I've got two items. The first one is I wanted to modify my response to Counselor Gannon's query about openings on the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board. I mentioned there was one full member open in the Zoning Board of Appeals and there is one full member open on the Planning Board. So I didn't, when I looked at Mr. Whitney's appointment tonight, I was thinking that was filling out the board, but we still have an opening. So I need to modify that response. And the second item is I do want to thank and appreciate the town council's actions earlier tonight regarding the funding of the fiscal year 2020 related items included in the employment agreement, Mr. President.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is request for information. Any requests for information? Counselor Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request information from the relative of the town clerk. As you know, we've got an issue of both public democracy and COVID-19. And that's the election scheduled for this coming September 1st and November 3rd. We just got word today that the governor approved funding to allow the Secretary of State to send out requests for absentee ballots across the state and tough, short- requests for absentee ballots across the state and tough, short notice, but I'm, I would like a report from the town clerk relative to the town's readiness to mail out the ballots. And with regard to both the primary and the general election, I know that other towns have had difficulty finding staffing, folks who are concerned or in a physically vulnerable state to, to be around people. I just want to get a reassurance that Watertown's in top-notch shape, which I'm sure of, but I just wanted to get a report on that, on that matter. Thank you.
Any other requests? Counselor Cornelis.
Thank you. I know that everybody's been very busy, lots of things going on in the community. I do have several items that I have submitted to the town manager and I trust that he will be responding as time allows. So thank you.
Any other requests? Seeing none, can I go to, we'll go to announcements. Any announcements? Counselor Palomba.
Thank you, Counselor President. This is, most of the announcement is a recognition. I just wanted to say that, you know, the Committee on Human Services was the first committee to hold a meeting through Zoom when we discussed the Emergency Rental Assistance Program and the Permanent Rental Assistance Program, which was a couple of weeks ago. I do want to apologize that those minutes from those meeting, that meeting, that particular meeting were not available sooner. There's a miscommunication with myself and members of the committee. But I do know that the Housing Partnership at that meeting proposed to create, to set aside $175,000 for an emergency rental assistance program, which, given the information we had at that meeting in terms of the number of increased unemployment in Massachusetts, in Watertown, from 2% or 3% to 11% and the information we got from the Watertown Community Foundations and from the Social Service Resource Specialist, that the issue of meeting rental, meeting rent now, for those who are also possibly in arrears or in the future, is high. So I just want to acknowledge the work of the partnership on making that decision. And again, my apologies that the minutes from those meetings is, are not available. They will be available soon. And just to note that we moved quickly on this. And I think it's a demonstration of the Human Services Committee commitment to affordable housing. Thank you.
Are there any other announcements? Seeing none, public forum, any member of the public? I don't see any hands. Counselor Pichorelli, any emails?
No emails received.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Cornelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palomba.
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Baze.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Felton.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.